Good evening, everyone, for joining us tonight. This is a city council hearing on City Council Bill 21-072, 21-173, and 21-174. It's an extension of some other meetings that we've had on all of these companion bills associated with the Dollar House program in the House Baltimore City Package. If you could recall the last meeting, Legislative Director Nikki Thompson, Director Thompson, went over some amendments that we had, just so we can kind of talk about them in detail, not only with the council members, but also with the administration and the department. We've kind of run this as a very transparent and open process to just allow dialogue to occur and ensure that we put the bill in the right posture before we vote on it. What I would like to recognize at this point is the Vice President of the City Council, Sharon Green Middleton, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, Councilman John Bullock, Councilman Zeke Cohen, Councilman James Torrance, Council Chairman Robert Stokes, and Councilman Yitzhak Sifler are from the office of the Council President. We have Legislative Director Nikki Thompson, as well as Matt Stegman, Director Stegman. We also have on Matt Stegman's team Nathan Poole on the call from the administration. We have the Mayor's Office of Government Relations and Ms. Nina Themelis. We also have the Housing Commissioner, Commissioner Alice Kennedy. From Housing, we have Stephanie Murdoch from the Law Department. We have Elena DePietro. We also have from Finance, Mayor James, and I'm sorry, and Victor Tavaila from the Law Department as well. We also have on the call, I see Chairwoman Dani McCray. So first and foremost, thank you for reconvening. And as you know, this is really, really important discussion as we talk about moving our city forward, but more importantly, connecting folks to generational wealth through property and home ownership. That's kind of the basis and purpose of what we've discussed today. So with that, really would like to open up the floor to see if there's any additional amendments or discussions on the amendments that was presented on Monday.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilwoman Ramos, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I forgive me if this happened, this came up on Monday, but I didn't, wasn't paying attention. Did we get an analysis of the amendments from the Law Department? Or the administration? And can we maybe get those?
I know we still don't have the interlineated version, but the Law Department get a chance to review and provide feedback on the amendments from Monday.
Mr. President, this is Elena DePietro from the Law Department. We have, Victor and I have reviewed amendments and are prepared to respond to any questions about specific amendments or in general to all the amendments.
Thank you, Mr. DePietro.
Can I, can I add something, Mr. President?
Of course.
Yeah, I sent, I sent some of your staff members four different amendments. It's too late to get them drafted by the time I got them in. There's too late to get them drafted by Legislative Reference, but they're going to get drafted tomorrow. By and large, they're rather technical. They don't really significantly change what you wanted to do with the bill, but we can go through those if, whenever you want to go through them.
No, I think this is a good time for us to kind of discuss them and go through. So Victor, I know we don't have them physically. We're not going to vote on them clearly today until we get them back from Legislative Reference. But just so everyone's on the same page, it would be interesting to hear, I guess, what you think from a technical perspective, we need to amend in the bill.
Yeah, and I was looking, I will, and I don't, if you don't have the interlineated version, I got one. So, but I can, I can tell you that on the, does no one have the interlineated version?
Nikki, do you have that? Have we sent that out to all council members?
Yes, Director Green sent the interlineated version to council members and also to agencies as well. And DHCD did provide an updated report based on the amendments, and that was sent around as well.
There we go. So we're all working off of the interlineated version. I'll pull it up right now, Victor.
Okay, great. So I want to go to page seven of that interlineated version. And this is a small amendment.
Mr. President, my apologies, I don't see an email from Mr. Green. I just have an updated agency report from the Real Estate Office from.
Yeah, Director Thompson, I don't see it either. Could you just send it out to all council members?
Absolutely.
And is there anybody else on the call that needs it so we can follow along with the Law Department? And I'm so sorry, I think I did this last meeting. We have Casey Keller from the Comptroller's Office. She hung around with us at the last meeting as well, and I think I forgot her name. So Casey, thank you for joining and participating in this discussion. It's hard sometimes with the windows changing when people are popping in and out, but I see Casey's name again. So Victor, we'll get started as soon as Director Thompson is able to email out all the council members. That way we'll all have it and we can go from there.
Sure.
I just sent the interlineated copies for each bill, so you should have it for 72, 73, and 74.
Thank you, Director Thompson.
Question, Nikki, was that the chart thing?
No.
That was different, okay.
That was.
The interlineated version should have, we just received them, so they went out today.
Okay.
That chart was to help us follow along the amendment changes.
Right, good, that, that was a good reference, that chart. Thank you, Mr. President.
All thanks to Director Nikki Thompson and her team.
I've received the email, so I think everybody probably has.
I don't have it yet.
Okay.
My firewall is a little slower than yours. All council members, thumbs up, you guys good to go? Councilman Cohen, you good?
Yep, got it.
Perfect, all right, Victor, the show is yours.
Okay, thank you. Looking on page seven of the interlineated version, there is a residency period of incarceration right in the middle of that page. That provision was added, that's one of your amendments, Mr. President. And that provision would make sense if we were talking about a durational residency requirement, but we eliminated that in this amendment. So this is a sort of a remnant that doesn't need to be here. It also appears in Bill 173, and Elena DePietro will talk about that, but I know it's in her bill as well. So I would say that you just basically delete this because it has no effect, no legal effect at all. On page nine, at the very top of the page, on A sub two, you see the Department shall prepare a lease for the property by the city as lessor and the addict, at the very end it says at a cost of $1 a year. Well, you don't add, the City Council doesn't have any legislative power to set the lease rate for property. So what I would suggest is that you amend that bill to say at a lease rate set by the Department, which would be the HCD. With similar amendment would be on page 10. If you go down to the bottom on transfer of ownership on paragraph C, it says, following the final inspection, the Department shall transfer ownership of the property to the participant, doesn't say anything about sale price or anything like that, for the same reason that you really don't have any authority to set the price. And at this point, I assume the price would be $2 or something like that. We would say, we would have an amendment that says the Department shall transfer the ownership of the property to the participant at the sale price established by the Department. So basically, they're same, the same type of amendment there as well. The final amendment is on another provision that you had in your amendments, Mr. President, which is on page 11 of the interlineated bill, you see the recapture provisions. Those are fine, except it's a little goofy because the lien really should be placed on the property at the time of transfer. What you have here, in the language that you have here, you have that the, at least in one of these cases, the lien is going to be placed at the time that the participant sells the property. It's too late by time, because you're going to be punishing the buyer. So we have some language that basically would just reconstitute what you have here in a more, in a more digestible fashion essentially.
Got it, got it.
That's it.
No, that's perfect. Thank you. Are there any questions? What Victor was able to just cover? Seems pretty straightforward and really logical. Thanks for helping to clean us up, Victor. All right, now from the Law Department, are there any other amendments on, on the other two bills? I know that one carries over to 73, I think the first or second one that Victor was able to talk about, but are there any additional amendments that you would just like to verbally talk to us about at this time?
Mr. President, Elena DePietro from the Law Department, yes, there is the same provision that Victor mentioned in Section 5, I don't have the page numbers on this bill, on the interlineated version, but it's Section 6D 6, 6DB, that doesn't make sense, 6 capital D slash B. So anyway, it's on page five. It says, an individual who otherwise eligible for this program may consider a period of incarceration in Baltimore City as residency. That is no longer applicable because we've removed the durational residency requirement in this bill as well. So that should be stricken from the bill. Otherwise, we are in agreement with all the amendments that were proposed in the package that we received and can move forward with this bill.
Well, thank you so much for working so hard with the team. Really appreciate
You're welcome.
your insight, you and Victor. At this time, I believe, Councilwoman Ramos, you might have some amendments that you would like to cover tonight?
I have some that I've been working on, but I did want to hear from the Commissioner if that's okay.
Sure. Do you have questions for the Commissioner?
Yeah, I think we did get a bill, an amended bill report from the Commissioner on the amendments and wanted to just get her feedback, if that's okay, Mr. President.
That's perfectly fine. Madam Commissioner, the floor is yours.
Excellent, thank you, Council President Mosby. Glad to be here this afternoon, evening for the opportunity to respond to those proposed amendments introduced just about 48 hours ago. I appreciate, you know, to continue to provide this testimony to date. You know, our agency, DHCD, has worked diligently in the last eight weeks to provide thoughtful, detailed analysis of the housing package on bills that, you know, definitely impact our agency. I hope that the analysis that we provided, you know, illustrates and underscores the expertise that we bring to the subject matter, as well as the usefulness of the conversations and consultation with us on these bills. You know, we've talked about this before and with many other of the council members that working together leads, you know, to the best outcomes. And we always look forward to an opportunity to share information about what we are doing at DHCD and how we can create new programs and move forward as well. As the Commissioner, still committed to continuing to provide thoughtful analysis on this legislation and also look forward to executing DHCD's vision and Mayor Scott's vision of equitable neighborhood development. We do have amendments that we have put forth in our revised bill report, amended bill report, I should say, not revised. You know, we are overall committed to creating those homeownership opportunities and supporting important outcomes by addressing the root causes and breaking down barriers that limit homeownership opportunities for people who have historically experienced housing and equity in Baltimore City. I think the overall general theme, again, with our bill report is that we see, you know, selling the house for a dollar is the easiest component to this. It's actually the access to capital lending, the affordability, and the work that we're doing on comprehensive community revitalization that also needs to be in place in order to achieve the homeowner out, homeownership outcomes that we know that we need in our city. So for Amendment 1, you know, this is the one that strikes the term legacy residence. We don't object to removal of the term of legacy residence. We take no position on that addition to the recitals. Amendment 2 removes the definition of legacy resident. We object to the substitution of legacy resident for additional eligibility criteria, which we feel only continues to add confusion and additional layers of review that would be necessary. We would recommend removing the eligibility requirements altogether and truly give the Department discretion in prioritizing applicants based on equity considerations developed in the rules and regulations and not codified in a new program. For Amendment 3, this removes two criteria from the legislation for the inclusion of a property on the registry. We would suggest deleting the registry requirement altogether. As we've stated before, DHCD already has a registry, and we don't feel that it needs to be duplicated for the purposes of this program. Amendment number 4, this codifies the returning citizens amendment. I believe this is one that Victor also just talked about. We don't take a position on that amendment. Amendment 5, this removes the unconstitutional requirement for proof of residence and renumbers. We don't, this amendment doesn't have an impact on our agency position. Amendment 6, we do not take a position on this amendment. That's the one that adds additional application requirements for the homeowner counseling certificate. Number 7 removes the Department's duty to create and provide estimate for the cost of repair. We don't object to that amendment. The second part of that amendment clarifies the order in which priority should be given for multiple applications. We don't take any position right now on that amendment. And Amendment 8 is removing the program requirements for the violation of the lease and requirement. You know, we don't take any position at this time on that amendment. Amendment 9 removes the extension of the program participation, replaces it with a method for recapture for the 10 years. We do not object to this amendment. However, it does not impact our agency position on the bill. And the one piece is, is that the amendment extends the effective date from December 31st, 2025 to 2030. However, we didn't see that it took into account that the legislation would still take effect on the 30th day after enactment. So, you know, we would recommend an amendment to move the effective date to 365 days after the enactment to allow, you know, additional time for program design, et cetera. In conclusion, while we do not object to any of the amendments proposed by the Council President, we have put forth some suggestions on some of those. And we appreciate the sponsors, you know, attempt to incorporate some of the areas of concern that we outlined in our bill report, as well as other agencies. Overall, the amendments do not change the Department's opposition to the bill, and we don't believe address some of the root barriers that we see as it relates to affordable homeownership, access to capital, and driving homeownership outcomes as best as we can. We still feel the legislation represents an unfunded mandate and in some cases could be more restrictive with some of the amendments, especially around the eligibility requirements that's been put forth. So with that, I will, that completes our updated bill, amended bill report for Council Bill 21-0172.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Again, we, just for full transparency, we had the opportunity, sitting down with the Housing Department Commissioner Kennedy and her team today, to kind of go over some of the numbers, just as a update to our Monday discussion, you know, we constantly talked about the numbers and saying that we're going to meet. We actually had that meeting today. So again, Commissioner Kennedy, thank you for your team and your staff being so open and, and working hand in hand with us on the amendments, as well as, you know, despite the position and despite, you know, going forward. So thank you for your partnership. I think, Councilwoman Ramos, you still, do you want to cover some of the ideas that you're going to bring forward to the council as it relates to?
I'm happy to talk through some of the things that I've been working on. They're not quite ready for primetime, and I hope that's all right, Mr. President. But just given the discussion in the last few meetings, and I haven't had a chance to share everything with the Law Department and the, with the Commissioner. But I, you know, was, in this particular bill, concerned about what I brought up last time around the being underwater. And so I thought, well, maybe we need to limit to houses that are smaller in size so that there is not that much cost related to rehabilitation, as well as looking at striking the, as the Commissioner said, striking the directory or the registry and just delineating which properties are eligible in their current outline and their current website that they have. Instead of a lease, the city currently uses land disposition agreements. And so maybe that's a way to address the concerns about the lease. But again, I haven't had a chance to talk to the Commissioner about how that would work and if that would be a good idea. And then also, the legislation talks about, you know, having inspections every, well, first it talks about that the person could be living in the property while the rehab is going on. And sometimes that happens, you can get a temporary right of entry. But what I had proposed is that they don't at all, they just go through the rehab and then the transfer is made, and that it would be along the same lines as how we do the regular inspections, so not quarterly, but every, you know, however we need. When the plumbing is done, we get an inspection. When the electrical is done, we get inspection, et cetera, just as it's been done, been done now. So those are some of the main things. I do have a, you know, how we transfer the ownership back to the owner. So I just need to talk those through with the, with the Commissioner before we, we send it into primetime and also to your office, because it does, it's different than what I think you're interested in doing in some of these.
Actually, it's pretty consistent, particularly when we talk about in LDA's, the inspection as well. And the last thing you mentioned about the certificate for occupancy and like actual transfer. So yeah, just make sure you talk to Nikki. I think there, there are going to be a couple additional amendments coming out just so we can kind of be on the same page. But I'm happy to hear that you're kind of thinking in the same vein as us.
I mean, my, my main concern, as you heard before, is just making sure that folks aren't going to be underwater. So how can we make sure that that, we can deal with that as well, so?
No, I think that's a concern of everyone. Again, you know, I think the banks are pretty good at particularly these like construction loans that they don't go underwater, trying to pull some, get some empirical data about, you know, how many properties, you know, banks actually finance as it relates to these construction rebuilds, type of development deals that are underwater when someone takes them over. But, you know, we don't necessarily have the information yet, but working on trying to get that. But the banks have that pretty solid job of not lending out money to projects that are underwater. But again, thank you for your insightfulness. If you could definitely follow up with Director Thompson, because again, the LDA, the inspection and the transfer of property is something that we're actively working on as well with the Law Department. But again, thank you for your insightfulness. Are there any other questions for Councilwoman Ramos, for the Law Department, for housing, or any other amendments or ideas that council members might have to bring up to the discussion today?
Mr. President, this is Elena DePietro from the Law Department again.
We always love to hear from you, Elena. The floor is yours. No, it's fine.
We had not discussed very much Council Bill 21-174, which is the seniors repair program.
Okay.
Ashley Brown wrote the report on this bill, and I'm filling in for her today. She was, she did review the amendments and was concerned about one, one thing had not been addressed. And that's on page three in Section B there, bottom half of the page. The, the standards by which the, I should start my video instead. The standards by which the applications must be reviewed by the Department need to be sort of, need to be mandatory, they can't be, oh, we'll consider these because otherwise it would seem as an, as a exercise of discretion being delegated that is inappropriate for the, the City Council to do, illegal actually. So we would propose that, we can propose some language to change the beginning of that sentence to make those considerations that follow there actually mandatory. They must be, you know, accomplished prior to saying, accepting an applicant.
Okay. Totally understand. So we would want to strike show and kind of reword that.
Right, it would read something like the Department, before accepting an applicant, shall verify that the following criteria have been met.
Understood, okay.
I'll get DLR to write that up.
Thank you so much.
Sure, thank you.
I did see one, I think Councilman Torrance is having some issue with audio. He just wanted to clarify, I guess, the definition of what underwater. We've used it a couple times. The assumption is, I guess, someone takes over the property, they owe more on the property than the property's actually assessed at all were from an appraisal perspective. I guess, I think, Councilwoman Odette, you've brought that up a couple times. Do you want to add to that definition or provide additional context?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, we're, we want to make sure that if somebody is going to have a loan that is going to be a construction loan, because usually in these days, and depending on the market, the construction obviously is going to be a lot more expensive than what the home will end up being worth or may end up being worth. And so that gap, we don't want to have people owing more than what the property is worth. So, yeah.
Yeah, good, good explanation. And, and the idea that I think we've talked about back and forth, we can, maybe we have an opportunity for some folks in the financial lending practice to come and can communicate to us is, you know, banks do that assessment. So they, one part of the construction process is having an actual appraisal of like the post-construction of what that house would cost, right? And that's what the bank would ultimately decide to lend a percentage of, maybe 80% of whatever that, that amount is. So that, that's the discussion that we've been having, Councilman Torrance, about will the properties ultimately be underwater? Because, you know, many of these properties are dilapidated in communities that have been disproportionately disinvested in. And there's a reason that they're vacant, right? So that's where the concern is coming from, Councilwoman Odette and some other members.
And, Mr. President, if I could please add that then if the person decides to sell and they sell at a loss, that actually can be taxable, and it would be, it would penalize that particular buyer. So it really doesn't, it's not a good situation at the end. So just wanted to make that clear.
No one wants to buy any level of real estate that's underwater. Moving in the wrong direction. Did that answer, you, we still can't hear you, Councilman Torrance. You can, if you want to, you can put it in the chat and we'll go over it. Are there, while, while Councilman Torrance is putting his question in the chat, are there any other questions, concerns, or any unreadiness at this moment?
Council President, this is Commissioner Kennedy. We did also have, earlier I spoke to our comments on 21-0172, but we also provided amended bill reports for 73 and 74. I don't know if you want me to go through those.
No, Commissioner, I think this is a perfect time. I know Councilman Torrance has some questions that he's typing up. So while, while he's doing that, if you could cover 73 and 74, that'd be great.
Okay. Once again, this is on Council Bill 21-0173, which is the Baltimore City Home Repairs Grant Program. Amendment 1 removes the unconstitutional length of residency requirement from the legislation. You know, we feel that it still provides ambiguity and confusion that may be caused around verification and prioritization of program participants. that may be caused around verification and prioritization of program participants. We continue to have some concerns around the additional staffing capacity that the program will require to evaluate applications and complete those eligibility verifications based on the modified requirements laid out. You know, we do object to the removal of the proof of residency requirement, but we object to the substitution of the criteria, which continue to add those additional layers of review. It also codifies the returning citizens and their families, not excluded. We don't take a position on that portion of the amendment. It does increase the household income threshold from at or below 80% to at or below 130%. You know, our programs in existence, our loan and grant programs, we have, we have both, not just loan programs. We do try to, you know, prioritize our most vulnerable residents and so forth to help them through the process. Amendment two, you know, adds that requirement that the participant reside in the property for a period of five years. And would it necessarily, you know, reconstitute, necessitate repayment of the grant funds? We don't object to that continuing residency amendment, however, it does not impact our overall position. While we don't object to any of the amendments proposed, we still believe that there are some issues and that, you know, does not change our opposition to the bill. It does require the designated impact investment neighborhoods that meet a certain requirement. We already do identify those in our work. We have four identified impact investment areas, East West, Southwest and Park Heights. So we would suggest deleting the criteria on page two, lines 15 through 25 to designate those neighborhoods and meet certain criteria identified. It also states varying amounts and, you know, emergency repairs and mobile home repairs. Mobile homes are not currently defined nor allowed in the city zoning, building or housing codes. And so mobile home repairs should be deleted from page five, lines eight through 14 of the bill. And we already do provide assistance to eligible residents for accessibility repairs, emergency repairs and as well as general repairs through our different programs in the Division of Home Ownership and Housing Preservation. Also, again, the legislation would take effect on the 30th day after the date is enacted. And we would recommend an amendment to move the effective date to 180 days to allow the agency time for additional hiring and program design as stated there. For Council Bill 0174, which is the Baltimore City Homeowners Grant Program, Amendment one requires applicant provide documentation to the department for review that they're able to pay or secure other grants to pay any costs in excess of the maximum grant award and to lead the eligibility requirement. We don't have any objection to that portion of the amendment. It goes on to remove certain information that would be requested of the applicant, including sources of total household income and number of family members. DHD has no objection to that portion of the amendment. It also removes the condition of the property, no objection, or we take no position on that portion of the amendment. And it also requires the department to review and return proof of payment costs associated with the reverse mortgage. And we take no position on that portion of the amendment. While we don't object to any of the amendments proposed by the President and appreciates the sponsors' attempt to incorporate some of the concerns, does not change DHD's opposition to the bill. And we feel the amendments do not go far enough to address some of the additional concerns laid out in our bill report. You know, the Department of Finance anticipates the program will cost around $756,632. An additional staff would be needed. As written, the legislation would take effect on the 30th day after it is enacted. We would recommend moving the effective date to 180 days after enactment to allow for agency time additional hiring. And it's unclear how this would be funding because barring a funding source, DHD currently does not have the financial capacity to implement the grant program. And I'm in conversations that I've had with Director Kearney. It's also fairly clear that we believe that this, that ARPA could not be a funding source for this program. And I believe that her staff is still trying to put forth and look at that as a source. But overall, keeping low-income homeowners as well as our legacy residents and legacy homeowners in their homes is a key strategy to preserving affordable housing in our city. And, you know, the proposal laid out in the bill, we feel, you know, does not get to the root causes that we need to look at in terms of assisting residents on A, avoiding entering into a reverse mortgage or how to avoid actually the components that cause reverse mortgage foreclosure, such as inability to pay property taxes and as well as inability to, you know, obtain homeowners insurance. So those are the key areas where you enter into foreclosure is tax sale, your homeowner's insurance lapse, or you pass away. And those are the three common triggers of foreclosure. So we want to focus on, you know, the work that's being done with Mayor Scott with the Tax Sale Reform Working Group, as well as our other programs such as my deed, my legacy and education and informational, information on homeowners insurance and assisting people by avoiding tax sale in order to help avoid reverse mortgage foreclosure. Thank you.
No, thank you, Madam Commissioner. Any questions for Department of Housing, Community Development? Hearing and seeing none. I know that. Yes, Madam Vice President, before we go to you, I think Councilman Torrance, I know you put your questions in the chat. Can we hear you now or you want me to read it?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you perfectly. There we go.
So this is a conversation I've been having across my district for the Commissioner. I have a number of properties that are the exception to the rule that we really think about in Baltimore City, where they're formerly vacant homes that they renovated and the assessed value exceeds the principal in their law. So they've actually gained some sort of equity. My question to DCHD, have we done analysis on the number of vacant homes that are near private vacancies in the current assessed values of those homes? Because what I'm fearful of is we're going to address the underwater question is that we need data to see what is the current assessed value in terms of like a data pull from S-DEAD on those privately owned vacancies near the qualifying homes? That would then give us a true lens of how underwater the homes and properties will be. I just want to make sure that like that is a request to Housing Authority, to DCHD.
Councilman Torrance, can I ask a clarifying question? So I want to be sure the, it was a formerly vacant property. They've purchased the property. They obtained a renovation loan, mortgage to renovate the property, let's say for $175,000. They finished the renovation. They have moved into the property. And the state then assessed their property at a higher assessment, which is an assessment at $200,000, but their mortgage is at $175,000. So they're paying an assessed value that is higher than their mortgage value.
That is correct. You explained that much better than me.
Okay. And so that wouldn't be a situation of being underwater. What that would be is that there are opportunities actually for those homeowners to appeal their assessment with the state. So I would recommend that we actually look at that state assessment and help them get through the appeal process, which is common. And this is something that we see not just when renovating vacancies, but this is one of the things that happens in the assessment cycle where, you know, someone may purchase a property, you know, for $250,000 and, you know, the assessment comes in at $275,000 and they need to appeal that assessment because it's higher. Or they purchase it at $100,000 and the assessment comes in at 125. It also happens where some residents actually aren't aware that their assessment, like the tax assessment can change once they purchase the property and that they need to also obtain the homestead tax credit and get that in place to protect them from future assessments as well. So I think that we can look at, you know, some of the statistics that you spoke about, trying to pull information on vacancies and their assessed value or other occupied properties in the area and their assessed value. But ultimately, that is a state assessment issue that needs to be addressed and they can address that through appeal. And we've seen successful appeals as well where that assessment has been brought down.
And another issue, Councilmember Torrance, is when folks have like the CHAP tax credit or other tax credits, they're not really focused on the assessed value of when the triennial state assessment. So when it comes time for them and the clock runs out, either the five years or the 10 years, depending on the program that they're in, and they kind of start paying attention to the assessed value, they're locked in and the appeal process is already done. What we have to do is educate our folks, you know, when they do these renovations and even that they might be in some type of tax credit program or some type of chat program, install program. That is still important to understand and know where your property is assessed at, at that first moment of that triennial assessment. So you're not locked in, but that happens, you know, five, 10 years later when you look back and you see what your property was originally assessed at.
I understand that. So my question was more so because this is an exception and I reckon, and that's why I tried to put in chat that this was an exception to this general rule that we're seeing. So what I want to know from housing is what is the current assessed value of a lot of the privately owned vacancies in our city that had BBNs if possible? And compare it to if we were to do a metric at the current square footage. I believe it's $150 to $250 in square footage right now because of labor and lumber and see what really is truly the possible market, depending on where we are. Because what I want to know is make it that informed decision, right? Because I believe that we need to know, because if we know that a certain number of houses are qualifying, if the majority of the homes around those qualifying, as I remember, Madam Commissioner, you said the majority of the other vacancies on those blocks were actually privately owned. So I want to know what the implications are. Because if it is two houses that are sitting on on the block of 16 and the assessed value in S-DEAD is $1,200 for multiple of those vacancies or $20,000, then I want to know the true implications of actually having those homes qualify for the program.
No, understood. And I think one of the key things too is that assessed value is one thing, but appraised value is, you know, appraised as built value is a totally different factor, right? So the lender is going to be, you know, needing to evaluate the market for the as-built appraised value, which is what the loan will be determined by, not the assessed value. So we can do some general kind of understanding based on where we see assessed values, but those also tend to differ from appraised values for properties as well.
Thank you.
No, thank you, Councilman Torrance. At this point, are there any additional questions or concerns? Madam Commissioner, Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This question is for the Housing Commissioner. So earlier this week, the Ways and Mean Committee had an update on the ARPA funds and really talked about the outlines of the final rule. And we kind of talked about in some of that meeting, basically, how households and neighborhoods have been impacted by the pandemic, before the pandemic, just disproportionately throughout really our city. And during the pandemic, also with reverse mortgages, we've had several deaths, especially of older adults in our city. And the household makeup, finances, everything have changed. There really needs to be in-depth conversation and numbers because we put this bill together referencing a number of things that we found from the Abel Foundation. So there really needs to be an in-depth search about this because again, this is something that's affecting our older adults. And again, this new final rule approach really needs to be looked at. So I hope your staff is kind of updated and they also go through this final rule approach that we were briefed on earlier this week.
No, absolutely. And, you know, we're working very closely with Director Kearney on that. I'm going to actually ask her to speak a little bit to that. But before we do that, I do want to point out that what we need to be doing as it relates overall with the reverse mortgages to see, you know, how households have been impacted by, you know, the death of a homeowner and whether or not they're the only ones on that reverse mortgage. And what can families do? Because in a lot of instances, the foreclosure actually occurs when the death occurs because that's one of the triggering pieces to a reverse mortgage foreclosure. And unless the family has gone through evaluating the estate planning needs on what it would take to essentially kind of refinance and buy out that mortgage. Because typically you end up needing to come up with like a 90% loan to value ratio for that family in terms of their heirs and the estate to be able to buy out that mortgage and then continue to maintain living in their family home. And that is a much larger question than, I think, trying to look at just the fees associated with a reverse mortgage foreclosure. But I think part of the question that I'll pass along, and we're dedicated to looking at this issue because we've known that reverse mortgages are a problem within our communities. I believe that we've had residents that have been preyed upon by lending institutions with adverse lending policies and practices that highlight this as a solution for our residents. I've been having conversations with a number of organizations to see what other solutions we have to help potentially get residents out of reverse mortgages through other types of refinancing options. So we know that this is an issue and we know that we need to look at some of the root causes of the issues to avoid the foreclosure in the first place. And, you know, some of these foreclosures might not be avoidable. And what I'll ask Director Kearney to speak to is that, you know, in terms of fees, how those fees could or potentially based on the most recent Treasury rules not be covered, especially for anything with debt service under ARPA. But Director Kearney?
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. Good evening, council members and to all who are participating tonight. I can't speak to some of the issues around, surrounding that and foreclosure and things of that nature, but certainly the final rule talks about assuming that seniors are considered a disproportionately impacted population. And so certainly they would be eligible under ARPA for certain types of programs and services. The question that the Commissioner raises around fees is an important one because the final rule doesn't necessarily speak to that, nor does the proposed legislation. The proposed legislation talks about the $5,000 payment, but it's not clear what that would be used towards. Now, we assume that that would be towards mortgage payments. But it's unclear in the final rule whether the fees that are associated with reverse mortgage would be covered.
Okay. And I would just like to say that, you know, this is the reason why we're working together and this is to everyone. This is one of the reasons why we're working together and putting in amendments, not to try to move forward. Our people out there need help in many, for many different ways. And we can't continue to do things the same old way. We have to continue to work together and try to get things moving. You know, you had mentioned and we, both of you, you talked about fees. That is part of your job to figure out how to get, you know, how to make it work. We're just trying, we're sharing the problems that come to us. And I'm just talking about all, everything that we put in. We can't start off on this negative outlook of things. We have to do things differently in this city. And we, and it's about working together and trying to get approved legislation that both the administration and the legislative body can work on together. This, we, we as council members deal with this on a daily basis and even more so during, before, during and after the pandemic. So I just wanted to continue to keep that point and so all of us can keep our frame of mind. In everything that we're doing, it's about the services and helping the struggling people that come to us every day, not just sitting in. Not just try- sitting in an office and trying to, um, put things and work it on paper. We see and deal directly with the people that are suffering through this. I don't mean to, um, continue to elaborate on this, but, you know, that, that's the passion that this council continues to have as we continue to put bills in. Thank you.
No, thank you, Madam Vice President. Um, at this time, are there any additional questions for Department of Housing or Director Kearney? Director Kearney, thank you for joining us again tonight. Hearing and seeing none. I believe Director Thompson, um, we did get a amendment from an external request potentially.
Yes.
Have I misheard me correct? Okay. Do you want to cover that now or are you prepared to talk about that or?
Sure, sure, sure. Um, in a lot, thank you, Council President Mosby. In a number of our conversations with community advocates and, um, policy groups and housing advocates on how we can really make this work, um, in terms of implementation. A couple of the points that have been raised that are good amendments, but ultimately, um, given the timeframe, we weren't able to get them drafted and included to present formally, but I did want to raise them, especially, uh, given Commissioner's recent point out of the concern around heirs. So that was an amendment that we got from Fight Light Baltimore was to open up one seventy-three to heirs to allow for basically an automatic rollover of the grant that you would receive to be able to pay for homeowner's insurance, tax, sale, liens, those kinds of things. For the exact reason that you, uh, mentioned, Commissioner, because, uh, the process of having an estate in place prior to can be very difficult, especially for the communities that we're working with. So we really appreciate that amendment and I think it really gets to the heart of your concern. Um, and another point, I know we've had a back and forth about the prioritization and whether or not that is the most viable option for us moving forward with this legislation. But I did want to note that an additional amendment we got that I think is pertinent to the conversation from Fight Light Baltimore was including in the prioritization that, uh, those who have had their homes taken by the city by a condemnation or eminent domain also be considered as well. Um, so I did want to share those amendments since we, we're discussing the issue. Thanks.
The, and, um, Director Thompson, can I just ask for clarification? I think you mentioned the one amendment was related to seventy-three, but I just want to clarify that the heirs piece was actually for seventy-four?
Yes, and I, I believe I said seventy-four. If not, I was mistaken. It's definitely for seventy-four, not seventy-three. Thank you.
Okay. And I, I do want to point out one piece, which is that, um, the city of Baltimore does not take property. Um, even through, you know, with, uh, condemnation, we do not take property. We actually pay, uh, fair market value, uh, for property. That's
I think they were extending their commissioner to like the, um, Highway to Nowhere projects of the past like that.
Okay. I mean, I'm, even at that point, condemnation requires payment of fair market value for the property. So I just, I just, for everybody out there, I don't want there to be, um, a misnomer that we take property through condemnation and eminent domain. Um, you know, even with relocation or with, um, condemnation, we pay fair market value and we also pay relocation benefits if it's an owner occupied property. Upward, sometimes the package is in total over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. Well, we'll definitely send you the amendment, um, from Fight Light to see if, if it fits in or if you have some objections to it. Uh, at this point, are there any additional amendments? Um, you know, we heard from the Law Department, we've gotten some additional suggestions from Department of Housing, from Councilwoman Odette Ramos, uh, and from an external, uh, organization at this point. Is there, is there any additional, um, amendments or ideas that folks would like to bring to the table? Uh, just so, uh, the, this working group can, uh, ponder on it till our next meeting. Hearing and seeing none, it seems like we were able to get in here and get out in an hour. It's a lot better than a almost three-hour last session, uh, but this is important work. You know, we're going to continue to beat this thing down and, and work collectively. I think we underst- all understand the importance, uh, knowing what we're trying to march towards. Uh, and, you know, the importance of just working together. So I appreciate everyone's time. Um, to folks out there in the listening audience, uh, please continue to, uh, reach out to us if you have any questions or concerns or any other ideas associated with this program. Um, at this point, I will put the meeting into recess. Uh, we'll figure out on the next scheduled, um, uh, uh, meeting, uh, for this, but I'll just leave this meeting in recess and probably maybe Monday we'll figure out, uh, when we, uh, bring it back in session. So with that, thank you all. Good night.